Again to our second community forum. And we wanted to kind of get started, we're a little behind. We actually put together an agenda for tonight because there were some things that we didn't get to talk about during the last forum that we held prior to the city council meeting. And one of the, initially, we had on the agenda that Joe Probie was going to come, for those of you who may not have been at the NRZ meeting last night, to kind of give a brief kind of summary update as to where the No to ONG movement stands. He did a great job, by the way, for those that don't know or weren't there. They had the lawyers for ONG presenting their plan, and many of the audience members asked questions that this attorney could not answer, and in my opinion, got a little visibly uncomfortable. And then Joe presented his oppositional presentation that had a lot of good points. I'm not sure if it's been posted yet to their site, because you filmed it, right?
I did.
Yeah, okay. It really is something that if you're interested, you're opposed to this, it's something that you should definitely watch. Yes, sir?
A question, a question, President Lee, what is ONG?
ONG is a...
Asphalt plant.
An asphalt plant, thank you. I was gonna say, kind of like a pseudo-construction company, but they basically run asphalt crushing, cement crushing operation. You can see it off of 95 on Seabou Avenue. Big cranes, they've got about 12 acres over there, and it's been in operation for a couple decades. And they have been traditionally in violation of a number of zoning regulations. I believe one that I saw in particular was the height of the mounds of their stuff was well over the ordinance amount or the zoning amount that was allowed. And the administration this year moved forward and fined ONG for those violations. That was after ONG submitted an application to planning and zoning to move their rock crushing facility to the foot of Howard Avenue on...
Howard and Warden.
Howard and Warden, thank you.
Are these guys paying taxes?
They are, but it's a minimal amount because there are no structures on them, no formal or permanent structures on the property. Their taxes, from what I learned last night, they're paying about $68,000 a year in taxes at their present facility.
And their taxes are up?
And they, that I don't know.
But it's more than Bass Pro, right?
Excuse me?
It's more than Bass Pro is paying.
Most likely, at this point, yes. John?
That's one. Bass Pro is paying full taxes.
They are?
Is paying full taxes to the city of Bridgeport.
Thank you, Steve.
They go to the city, they go to the city of Bridgeport. Check with the tax collector, you will see that.
Thank you for that clarification.
A question on ONG. They may be, they're one of, if not the largest contractor, general contracting firm, heavy construction, road construction contracting firms in the state. I believe they're out of Torrington initially. They have a site here with more than, they have multiple sites, at least 15 pieces of property, more than 35 acres. I didn't add up all the taxes, but that's the number I think Joe used. And you're right, there are only a few structures, but it's open storage of rocks materials visible. And there was a good comment last night. What I would say in addition is that the economic development factors for using the five and a half acres right next to the CRA plant, Joe had some wonderful pictures, they didn't even have to be touched up, that they were showing vegetation and whatever. The point that was made last night is that if they secure that position with this proposition, it is, and put up the crushing and the 12 and a half acres over to five acres, if you can do that, 10 pounds for the five pound bag, if you can do that, it will probably create a domino effect and we'll never get better development than that. And without buildings, or with the minimal of buildings, without the permanent roofing structure, we won't get the taxes that make this not a good viable alternative for real economic development by the shoreline. And the jobs were four jobs instead of, he showed us another two acre piece down here that had 20 jobs anyway. But it doesn't hit the various markers for our master plan. It may fit on some grounds, but it doesn't make that. Thank you.
And that point was actually brought up last night, too.
Yeah, I'm repeating what was there last night. Thank you.
I just want to address the gentleman's question. ONG is also a very close construction partner in the construction of the city schools, and they have a 14-year no-bid contract. And to John's remark, I heard that, John Lee's remarks, that the site is something really that Peter Gennaro wants, which is another favorite developer. Regardless of what happens, ONG, we all have to be vigilant about Mr. Gennaro's words.
And just one other comment, which is that someone posted some very interesting articles. ONG has paid the third largest fine ever charged anyone by OSHA for violation of sinking regulations. So they have a number of, you know, I mean, they're not small league when it comes to their violations.
And there is, for those of you who don't know, there is a Facebook page titled "No to ONG" that Joe Probie and his wife started, probably, you know, six weeks, two months ago. If you don't like it and you are on Facebook, please like it so that you can see all of the announcements. They formed a partnership with the, I have it in my notes from last night, and I remember from the Facebook page, the Connecticut Healthy...
Oh, Connecticut Healthy Alliance, Connecticut.
Healthy Alliance, Connecticut, that is now behind them and supporting, and hopefully will be able to provide even more data that can be used. Most importantly, there are two zoning-related meetings coming up. The first is on August 10th. It's with the Zoning Board of Appeals. That deals with the Seabou Avenue location, because they're appealing the citations and fines that the city has placed in violation, or the violations against the Seabou Avenue property. That particular matter has been deferred over probably the last three months. The more important, it is very important, though, to be there just to show support of, you know, of an opposition to ONG in general, and to learn more about the way they operate. But the most, the more important meeting is the one that's on August 29th, and it's the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they will hear information and make a decision on that relocation of the Seabou Avenue plant to Howard Avenue. So Scott and I have, in conjunction with Steve Stastrom, have sent a letter of obvious opposition to the zoning committee and department in Bridgeport. We've obviously, for every reason that has been put out there with regards to the health issues, the economic issues which were brought up last night, which I thought, again, not in accordance with the master plan, that's another piece of the puzzle, and also the fact that they've had numerous violations in the past, and they say they'll do something, and they don't. They don't follow through, they'll be good for a year, and then the wheels will fall off. So the NRZ decided last night that they are also going to be voicing their support in opposition of this relocation, and the more people Joe posted recently, there was a meeting earlier this week, this week or last week? It was last week. The CBA meeting for Seabou was last week. But there was, there was still a good, maybe 15 or 20 people there, so he thought that was great, and we need to just, you know, pile in, like everybody piled in for the city council meeting, because it does make a difference when you show your opposition to something. So, please.
No one's spoken about it, but I'm in there, I dealt with environmental industry for 40 years, but the odor from a asphalt plant will affect everybody, black rock. Once the breeze comes down Harvard, I mean, we're paying highest taxes, and it's not a good smell. So that's the biggest issue that I see. And they have all open structures, so if you were telling me there would be a plant that was being enclosed, that they control all these things, you're not doing that.
That's not the plan at the moment.
So that's the thing that we all have to be aware of, that the quality of life issue, and, you know, and no one has spoke about that tonight, but the odor would be there. And you think it's hard to sell your house down.
The problem is one of enforcement. I've been monitoring this stuff for four years. My business is on Howard Avenue, been there for 68 years, and I've seen it all, from monk trash morgue, you name it. All nice people here, all well-intentioned, and we can talk till we're blue in the face. If there's no enforcement, whatever we say, whatever the politicians say that they're going to do, never happens. Never hits true.
And I think that that's what drove the current administration to get involved and to start enforcing some of these, like I said, these violations have been going on for years in terms of the height, I know that for a fact, and other factors. So, you know, I get, I do give them credit for stepping up, for whatever reason, and saying, you know, you need, and recognizing the fact they're in violation, and fining them or attempting to fine them. Something else...
Did they get paid for those fines?
No, they're contesting it, and that's what the next CBA hearing is all about on August 10th. Is, again, last week, there was a hearing scheduled, I think it was the second, at least the second time it was on the calendar. There was an excuse that their lawyers said they didn't realize that there was going to be a quorum, and so they didn't bring their, all their full legal team, and it was, it was basically a stall tactic. But as Joe said last night, there is, it is beneficial the longer they stall, because it gives everyone more time to mobilize. It gives everyone more time to create alliances with outside agencies that can provide help and data to strengthen the opposition and the fight against, against this relocation, which the Seabou Avenue thing, I think, is atrocious. The relocation to Howard Avenue cannot happen, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I think everyone in this room is concerned. So it really is important that if you are able to make this meeting, to please come. Joe unfortunately was not feeling well tonight. Like I said earlier, he would have been here. I know he's looking at trying to put together a panel of public speakers, having each public speaker kind of address a different byproduct of the opposition based on what their expertise is. And so it really, it's, yes, sir?
I'd like to know what your position is, because I've been here for 12 years, and I've heard lots of people voice concerns, but nothing ever happens to what we say. It's what you say, what your position is.
I mentioned earlier, Scott and I are both opposed to it. We were, we've sent a letter in conjunction with Steve Stastrom to the zoning commissioner and to the board, saying for all of the reasons that have been laid out, that, most particularly at that time, the health issues that are associated with plans like that, the staggering rates of asthma with children and adults, everyone that lives within a certain radius, the fact that there are a number of schools and housing that are located. I believe the current zoning requirement is a limit of, I want to say it's a third of a mile, I did look this up, I want to say it's a third of a mile. Some of these schools are just over the third of the mile. You can't, you know, you can't use that as, well, you know, they're 200 feet past the third of the mile. There's, there's, you've got Seaside Village, you've got, and there's, and there's a new commitment now to develop the waterfront in the south end through the state. David Kors is now working with the state on doing remediation of the waterfront down there. What is, what's going to happen having that plant there? I mean, it just, it's wrong in all aspects, and we both have publicly opposed it.
Has anybody addressed the ecosystem there? I mean, how it's going to affect the water, the fish, the whatever, did anybody address that?
They have their experts, and I know Joe has solicited other experts in the field. So, yeah, the group is definitely leached in that right direction.
When I asked Ray last night, what did, why did the town ask them to move? Okay? And he said last night, because the town is interested in development in that area, either condos or apartments. When something like this comes up, did that initial, were you aware of that initial ask to ONG to move their business? Or does this just hit you out of the blue? I mean, city council, was city council aware that there was an ask to ONG to move?
No. I think, I think Ray's point last night was that it was the previous administration that initiated the act.
And did that go to the city council? Is city council aware of those things?
You know, if there's a land sale, yeah, we need to be aware of it, and, you know, some...
And vote on it. But as far as the initial conversations and the asks, we're typically not privy to that type of conversation.
You're not, so it just comes when the land comes for sale, then you're made aware of that?
Yeah, general, yeah.
As a process?
Yep, yep.
So who in the city is responsible for this master plan and adhering to it and the economic development, and how do they stand up and say, wait a minute, we have this plan, and now you're violating it? I mean, we need that advocate to speak on our behalf as well. And who is that?
The zoning commission.
It's the same, my special power.
And I've not received a letter from anybody regarding this whole issue.
I'll vote for what we said.
I would bet the other commissioners that way. There's one other element here, that's the federal government and the state government with regards to the DEEP, water courses and all that nonsense. Who's talking to them? Joe Probie?
Marcy.
You know, I, from what I gather, there's been an effort to involve the DEEP, and basically the DEEP is saying it's up to the city. The DEEP has not taken an active role, and I think one of the issues, one of the issues here is that, basically, there are a lot of people, agencies, that should take an active role, but that haven't. And enforcement and getting something done is pretty much up to us. And I know that Joe Probie and No to ONG is trying to raise some money to hide, because environmental experts don't come out and, you know, measure things for nothing. And so they are trying to do some fundraising to get the kind of studies that are needed. But also, quite frankly, and this is just my own opinion, again, I mean, the point that ONG has no bid contracts for all of these schools suggests that there's a relationship between ONG and the city that is not simply, you know, all that it seems. And I think that we need things to hold people's feet to the fire in terms of looking at it, in terms of enforcing it. And anybody who knows consumer reporters, environmental groups, anyone who would help us hold people's feet to the fire in terms of exposing this, I think, would be very helpful.
In reference to a master plan?
Yeah.
10 years ago, Jonathan Briesen, the Urban Land Institute, which is world-renowned, they did the Inner Harbor in Baltimore, they did Faneuil Hall in Boston. They spent months here. We had meetings on building a better Bridgeport. They submitted a plan. Whatever happened to that?
Good, good, Charlie. Nancy Hadley completed all of those, the master plan, the zoning regs, all of that was completed, and it's, it is there, it just needs to be not...
Implemented? Okay, I might be a little...
For the most part, yes.
I might be a little shit, a little, like, I was the planning and zoning commissioner for nine years while that master plan took effect. What really happens is, ONG, these corporations, they have big bucks lawyers, and what they do is they bring these lawyers in, and we, the city issues a cease and desist order. They bring their lawyers to bear, and they tie this up in courts. The real question is, what's our lawyers doing? Why are they not countering their lawyers? That's the bottom line. They tie this up for years, nothing gets done, and we sit around and talk about it. Our lawyers need to counter their lawyers. That's what we have attorneys for. That's the real problem.
Also, somebody mentioned the state agency. Somebody mentioned the state agencies, and the state agencies do not get involved until there's an application, formal application of what they're going to do, what's going into the plant, what's coming out of the plant, things like that. So they can't really do anything, and it's normal from state to state until there's a formal application. And when such formal applications made, that's public knowledge, you can find out about that. But if they haven't made their applications yet for permits, then the state agencies can't get involved.
Part of the problem, the state agency issue, too, is that we have, Connecticut has sort of a statewide plan, it's the entire state, where there is industrial land on a waterfront, if you can make out a, if you can make out a case that something is water-dependent use, that's why you hear about the barage traffic, it's not a facility, then it's, you can sort of get around the DEEP some of the regulations process a little easier. DEEP typically gets involved, sort of, like you said, after the fact, you know, it's a local zoning issue generally upfront. If there's an incident, that's the time at which DEEP and state typically get involved in something.
Excuse me, I'm, sorry.
I just, my question is just a simple one. Do we have legal counsel at any of these forums, meetings? Because ONG has their legal team, do we have legal representation as well?
Does Joe have a lawyer at this point?
No. Most of the city.
Well, you don't have that, Sean.
At this point, they don't have a lawyer.
Not in NRZ.
Yeah.
Hi, I, Joe, I came primarily for the tax conversation. I see it's on the third on our agenda tonight. I see that Mr. Flito is here, and we still have Mr. Stastrom here, and I know he has to leave. I'm wondering if this ONG could circle back to that, so that we can talk about what we kind of need to hear about.
Again, before, though, please, Mark, in your notes, the dates for the zoning board appeals hearing is August 10th, that's with regards to the Seabou location, and then August 29th is a planning and zoning hearing with regards to the relocation of Howard to Howard Avenue. Just, if you're on Facebook, find the page, like the page, and you'll, you'll receive updates from, Joe is really good, and others are really good at posting information there and keeping everybody abreast of what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, we can wait till, we can wait till after, before grabbing on. Okay.
All right, so we'll go to, you know, we did want to hit on a few of the changes and things happening in the neighborhood, because people are often asked about what's going on. And we do have a handout, so if you want that, you know, if you need to link, help yourself to it. But, yeah, we can certainly talk about the tax and revaluation issue.
But can I just interject with regards to communications? If, and we left our business cards out on the front table, please take one. If there's something that needs to be recorded, if there's a blight issue, if there's, you know, curbs that need repair, if there's anything, please, either, I prefer email because I like to have all the details in writing, this way I got the address, I've got everything that needs to be handled. Scott, it's email, phone, either way. It's, it's hard to depend on social media to hear about complaints of things that are wrong in the neighborhood, and for a number of reasons. You go to your, I can't get on Facebook every day anymore. I go on, three days, I've got 75 notifications. I can't get through the first 10. So I please implore you, if you have anyone that has reached out to us, 99% of the time, we've been able to respond, get with the right people in the city. It doesn't happen overnight sometimes, but we are able to help them. So please take a card, it's the best way to communicate any neighborhood issues that you have, any, like I said, anything you see that needs improvements. The curbs, for instance, I did see that on Facebook, will be included in the Grover Street paving. So anyway, again, I just, that is definitely the best way to get in touch with us. So moving on now to, you want to introduce them?
Sure, so we have tonight our finance director from the city, Ken Flito, can help, you know, answer questions or whatever. We did put together just a little, sort of a fact sheet to give you a little sense of what happened during the budget process, as well as in terms of, you know, what's happened in terms of taxes and revale and the changes we're all facing. I think first and foremost, you know, I just want to say thank you for coming out. It matters that you care, and we're glad to hear from you directly. You know, Katie and I were hit with similar tax increase as you were, I imagine, in most of those cases. And that doesn't mean we like it. And we want to certainly try to do some things differently in terms of...
Why did you do it?
All right, so, yeah, let's, we'll look at the vote question then, okay? Because I know that's come up any number of times. And I outlined it here, too.
Could you pass that?
Sure. Yep. We vote on May 9th, and Budget Committee worked through May 7th, and there were some questions about how much state aid we had coming to us, because the state legislature was in the midst of dealing with its budget issues. So there was an agreement between council leadership and the mayor that, okay, we'll set aside some money, and if this does not, you know, pan out, the state takes away even more money from us than we expect, then at least we'll be able to pay our education bill as required by law. And if there's more left over, it comes back to us as some form of tax relief. Maybe not substantial, but it's there. So the mayor said, sure, just everybody pass the budget, and I'll veto it, and then we'll come back and revisit some of the other items, blah, blah, blah. Well, the state aid did not change. We did need to pay a certain amount of money to our MBR, our minimum requirement for education, and so there's, you know, over $2 million left over, which my expectation was, this is going to get refunded to us taxpayers, and it's going to go right back in, we're going to cut the budget, $2-plus million, and that's the way we'll proceed. Okay? This is not an ideal budget, it's a difficult budget. The administration's made the case that the previous budget failed to include certain key items of several million dollars. And by law, you know, there were certain payments on the order of about eight, nine millions that we had to make, and so the budget went from 532, the mayor asked for 560, we basically cut it down to 550, so...
I don't want to interrupt, but how did the budget not include, you know, millions of dollars of items? Have it done in IDR. What is IDR? What does that mean? It didn't include millions of dollars of items?
From the previous year?
Well, from the current year that you were looking at, if it's missing a lot of information, how would you judge that it was okay to look at? I mean, how is it that after you passed it, you're saying millions of dollars were missing?
No, 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 I'm sorry, not, not...
That's not what you said.
There were actually millions of dollars that should have been budgeted in the previous budget, in the previous administration...
Front bench, because that's what you were trying to say.
That were never budgeted.
I'm just trying to follow the...
So, when the current administration came in and they realized there were these new budget line items that hadn't been budgeted and that needed to be budgeted moving forward, so that was one of the reasons why, as Scott was explaining, the budget from the previous year ended up, the mayor's proposed budget was about 30, 30 million.
So 2015, 2016 is what you're saying?
Yes.
There was stuff missing, but in 2016, you're...
In 2017, the mayor's proposed budget included that, plus other additional expenses.
Can you give us examples of what those missing items were?
Yeah.
Katie, Scott...
Hold on, hold on, let's, let's answer this question in the back first, if that's okay, do you mind?
Why was that a surprise to you? And what was...
It wasn't a surprise to us, because we expected it, but one example was the MRF payment, which is a retirement, payment to the state retirement fund that our city employees now pay into.
You didn't know about that?
No, we did know about it, and that's partly why the budget was higher per the mayor's request.
What is it that you didn't know? You said that the previous administration left you with a bill that you didn't understand and didn't expect. What were those items?
I'll just be, this is my first year on the budget, on the council, so I can't speak for the fact that that was left out. The year before, that MRF payment was not included, and that's about $5 million.
So that needed to be included in the current budget?
So this year it was included.
Just a point of, point of order, the previous administration, we had two different councilmen who passed a budget that... that was 20 million off, or some number off significant, leaving revenues on there that they expected that didn't come, probably shouldn't have been pursued. And they left off expenses like the police overtime, or whatever it was, the extra MRF that we hadn't done before, but they knew it had to be paid. So these people, Mr. Sherwood, OPM, he was the guy who presented budgets for years and years and years. Okay? The new administration didn't recognize that. No, no, when they, these all folks came in in December. So they were, you're six months into, or five months into a budget year, and you're looking at the books, and I'm sure Mr. Flato will say that he got indigestion when he looked at what was happening, okay? But this group isn't responsible for stepping into a S-storm, okay? They inherited something, people have disagreed on the amounts. Ken could be a little more clear saying which elements were revenue items, which were expense items. That hasn't happened. But on the whole, there was a negative budget situation I walked into. Now, what did they do about it for the year going ahead? That hangs on them. And how did you deal with the deficit that's left after the mayor and Mr. Flato and Mr. Enquo, who was the new OPM, how they tackled this? And I've been watching this for five or six years. Most people here have ignored what I'm saying, but they have a little, listen to them. They, I know they're trying, they need to try harder, and they need more expertise. Now, with cost cutting, you need to use your $90,000 budget item that keeps going back to negative, I mean, it's a positive surplus every year. Hire somebody right now for budget cutting and get yourself some expertise before you go into next year's deal. But.
I agree with that. All right, I know. There are other items in the budget.
How do you mean other?
There are line items in the budget that say other expenses.
Okay, in a, in a, in a, in any department, and I'm happy to sit down with you as is Scott. Scott sat down with you. The, every month, the six items that are under on the appropriations side. Number one, code deals with salaries. Number two are other types of personnel, it could be outside services. Number three are fringe benefits with the health insurance pensions.
Overtime.
Overtime is probably under two or three, yes. Number four would be.
These are all control of the line. These are not surprises.
No, but you're, you're.
I've run three corporations, I know what other items are.
I'm not here to argue with you, I'm here to say that what you're accusing this group of and the timing is important.
Excuse me, this group, I'm just asking them if they looked at this budget before they approved it.
They didn't, they looked at the current year's budget, the current year's budget. The one that you're talking about with the deficit is the previous year that they had no responsibility. But that's all I'm saying.
This one, John, this one, this budget had a deficit. And all they did was add up the numbers and figure out, oh, here's the budget, and then figure out the no rate. Let's face it, no real attempt at cost cutting happened. That's what happened. You are working a credit company, and you see what everyone who was working at the city, who was elected, you, the mayor, the people appointed by the mayor, anybody else who saw that would say, okay, across the board, cuts. And not just laying people off, for God's sake, that's not how you balance a budget. And you don't pretend to lay people off by saying, these jobs are cut, I'm changing the name of it and hiring somebody I like. You don't do that either. Don't think we don't know that, I'm not accusing you, you guys didn't do it. I'm just saying what happened. We all know that. I'm going to perish, we got enough man-splaining going on here, okay? Really. None of that happened, and it needed to happen. And you guys are representatives who needed to speak louder and say, we're not seeing what we need to see in order to reduce the budget because we have a huge deficit.
Why don't you ask the man over there in a blue shirt? He's the one that did it. Ask him.
So why, why wasn't action taken to reduce the budget the way normal people run a business do?
Sure. So I'll try and take quick minutes.
I don't want quick minutes, I want to realize everyone, let's.
So last January.
All right, I want to hear this.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Ken Flato, finance director, CFO of the city. So last January, the team came in, we looked at the books. It took about a month to figure out the books were messed up, as Mr. Marshall Lee said. We gave the council in mid-January a 20-page PowerPoint presentation detailing every budget line and every area of the budget that was miscast in the budget that was passed a year ago, that we are living with up until June 30th, a few weeks ago. So the 15, 16 budget. Short version, about a third of it was pension problems. One thing was the $5 million of the police pension, which the state had letters, the city had letters from the state three years in a row. You're going to have to make this catch-up payment starting in 15, 16. The city leaders, for whatever reason, didn't put it in. The council didn't figure that out a year and a half ago. Overtime was underbudgeted by $3 million. There were $5 million of state revenues and other items that were overbudgeted. The city miraculously thought in the budget last year that they were going to double the amount of prior year, a year's taxes collected. Why they thought that, I have no idea. There's no real way you could do that in one year, so we're $2 million short there. So there was this list, line by line, that we gave out, happy to, we sent it to Scott and Katie, and anybody who wants it, you can read the PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Marshall Lee was giving out to every council member at a meeting. And that information's out there. We released it to the press, we gave it to every reporter. So the last six months, to a large extent, a lot of the, what one would call crisis management, has been trying to put those fires out, try to deal with it, try to not end up with a $20 million deficit that was real. We are not going to end up with that big a deficit, but we did that by one shots, you know, land sales, and by cost cutting. A combination of those two things are getting that gap down big time. The mayor decided that any rollover problem had to be reflected in this new budget that was presented to the council last April. And so the new budget did go up in dollars fairly significantly because we had to put that $20 million in, except for where we laid people off, or cut things, or whatever. And that was.
I don't need to interject.
Can I just finish the process for two minutes?
We can just let Mr. Flato speak for a few minutes?
So the mayor and his group, myself included, crafted a proposal to the council that the mayor's required under charter to submit, and it was submitted. Having been to every budget committee meeting that Scott chairs, I can tell you, co-chairs, I can tell you that they went through thousands of budget lines, trying to find places to cut, as we did as a staff before, we gave it to the mayor for his recommendation. You all know how government works. Police services are required, are you going to cut cops or not? There's all kinds of things, 70 or 80%, of any governmental budget, anywhere in the world, are fixed required costs, either because they're salaries with collective bargain contracts that under state statute, no mayor can break, and no council can break, once they're approved. They can only open negotiations and try to revisit them, or wait till the next contract, or go to arbitration at the next contract.
Pensions going forward.
And then there are all the other.
Are things that you can control.
Correct, correct, and $2 million of overtime. And $2 million of the overtime rate was cut over the last six months. But I'm just trying to give you the big, you know, the big picture.
Excuse?
There, you know, however you want to take it, I'm just trying to be as factual as I can. On top of that, we have the reassessment. And the reassessment, the mill rate levy, the tax levy went up $12 million in a $550 million budget, that's about 2.5%. The mill, the reassessment is the driver for what happened with tax bills this year. Even though the budget did go up, and a small part of that is obviously if the taxes is due to the budget. The vast majority of the issues that hit your area were because of the reassessment. And the reassessment, just quick, I know you know this, but I think people forget, the reassessment is a reset. You have a $100 valuation for the city, and for every person whose value goes down more than average, they're going to pay less than the person who goes down less than average. And what happened was, just as an example, there were 850 homes out of the 30-plus thousand residential properties in the city whose values went down 5% or less. Probably 2/3 of those, unfortunately, are in this part of the community. There were 4, almost 4,000, whose property values went down 35% or less. So if the average is about 20% down in a revale, which it was this year, the average property dropped 20%, 21.5% to be exact. For every condo that dropped 40%, they got a tax cut. And since their condos were valued at 70, 80, 120,000, three of those dropped, for every $300,000 home, that didn't drop by more than 10%. And so you have this reset that unfortunately affects people, but it has to be done, for better, for worse, in fairness, because otherwise the people whose values dropped precipitously are overpaying in their taxes. And unfortunately, the result is the areas that hold up the best in resale value tend to get hit. This revale, the other part, the other part of this is, but it's the law, it's the state law. It's not a city law. We, the mayor didn't come in and do this reassessment, it was three quarters done when we took office. The firm was hired by the former mayor two years ago, it's a reputable firm. They're required to use the state regulations to do their evaluations, and they do them. The only good, two quick good things I can tell you about this is, number one, if the stability of these finances is finally dealt with properly, and that I know is, you know, up to people's perception, but if, you know, smart people get this thing done and fix it, then there is no excuse next time, over the next five years, until the next revale, for anything to happen on the budget. The hope is that this budget lets, sets a base, for better, for worse, that will make things stable. The other quick thing I will say to you is, and Mr. Timpinelli, the chair of the chamber, you know, the Bridgeport Regional Council said this to me two weeks ago. There is more, and Ms. Foster knows this, there are more projects today in the works than in the last 20 years in the city for economic development. Whether it's the PSMG plant, or whether it's, you know, Steel Point second phase. If those things happen the way they should, hopefully, then that tax base will grow, that will help improve the next year round for residents five years from now. But that doesn't, I know that doesn't make you feel any better. Okay, so these, you know, I would defer to them, but the mayor, the staff, the council has that, you know, responsibility, yeah, look budget line, by budget line. And the budget book is online, and you can look budget line by budget line. And their book has it, you know, by like 50 lines per budget, it's not just four lines. And we try to go through, and anybody who knows, you know, in my record, I'm the cheapest Democrat, you'll find, yes, you try to cut where you can, but then the question is, what services are impacted? And how far do you go?
That's right.
And that's hard.
Which ones did you reduce?
And that's hard. The school, the school district is a good example. Personally, I would have preferred to give them $3 or $4 million. We couldn't, we didn't have the money. So we gave them a flat-line budget that's causing them major issues this year. The, there, this, there, there.
Were there salary reductions?
There was nothing, there was not one line, and I think I can pretty safely say this, there was not one line in this new budget that was increased more than last year, except for, except for contractually required things that we had no choice to do unless the mayor wins his battles with labor.
$60 million, Ken?
So there were about.
Contractually obligated to freeze the budget by $6 million?
There was about, well, the budget went up about 22 million in the end.
32.
Well, it ended up being about 22, but there was about $20 million when you add up all the various, whether it's stupid payouts of sick, and the pensions, and the overtime. The overtime is the only thing that one can say you can try to control. I got a pay cut, yes, I've taken furlough days, about 4% compared to what I was hoping.
Did the mayor get a pay cut?
Well, he took, he didn't take.
How about the city councilman?
He didn't take his paycheck his first two weeks. But, but the bigger issue, the bigger issue is, now, turn it back to these guys. There's a lot of nickel and diming one can do. And we can take our furlough days and have no increase and all that stuff. The structural issues are the challenge, and the structural issues are so hard because as I said with the pension, we have one part of our pension plan that's only 30% funded, that we inherited. We're having, we had to put $5 million in the budget this year. There's going to be another $5 million next year because those police and firefighters who are retired will not have their payments made if we don't support that fund.
Did you change the pension plan going forward?
But you can't, you can't unless you bargain it. You can't do that unilaterally, you have to bargain it. And, and the mayor is trying. So I'll just, I mean, that was just, I don't want to talk, you know, I'm happy to answer whatever questions in detail, but I wanted to give you a quick, quick flavor for it.
I'd just like to say one thing. In most places in this country, there's a thing called checks and balances. There's two parties, usually one party kind of watches the other one. That doesn't happen in Bridgeport. I know I ran for office, you know this lovely young lady here that ran for office, very smart, very capable, she got murdered. I made it on Board of Ed by this much, only because they had to have my annoying representation. I can tell you stories for two hours about the corruption that went on in Board of Ed during my time. It was so bad that I called the FBI. Guys, unless we change our voting procedures, it's never going to change. You want to know why budgets get passed? Because it's lockstep. There's one guy calling the shots, and everybody's going to do what the top guy says. And that's it. And as long as we keep pulling the handle for the same people, and it's not about being repelled.
That's also good for the city government, not regional government. We're one of the only states that still has this archetypal. Not really what it's all about. Because if we had a bigger, a bigger thing, more people, yes. More people watching the store, we would be better off. So that's what I'm saying, good. The incompetence is, let me tell you a true story. I've been out of the country for years, I work all over the world, and my taxes are going up. They went up 46% in a year, okay, at one time, all right? I got up to $51,000 a year, okay? I finally got very upset. I hired lawyers, last year they went into the city, said, oh God, we made a mistake here, I'm sorry. They lowered it down to 44, okay? So now, what happened? They go through the revaluation, they forget that I came in, right? And they raised me to 62. So I get a 50% increase. So now I hired my lawyers, and I said, here's the line checkbook, just go. Because I can't deal with this incompetence. You go down there and say, you guys said you were wrong, you made an adjustment, and then you forgot it.
Everybody worries about education and thinks it's a lack of money. The corruption I saw in Board of Ed was incredible. And just to show you how it works, at the time I was running four businesses. I was born in Bridgeport, I live in Blackrock. I had a business that hired thousands of people over 60 years, all shapes and all colors and all sizes. When I ran, I said nothing about being a Republican, I put my own name in the paper, put a picture of myself, knocked on doors, I spent my own money. I was lucky to get 4,000 votes. I ran against a man who had a mafia-sounding last name, who was 83 years old, who fell asleep at the meetings. I saw my own two VDI's. They told me about it, he got 14,400 votes. Tell me about it, you can put in a random name.
How much money do we pay the Board of Education every year that could be going to our teachers? We have this huge staff of people that do nothing.
I really, my question was not answered, Mr. Flato. You did not answer my question.
Sorry, maybe, please ask me again if people are okay with that.
We already knew that stuff from reading the paper. What you didn't answer was cuts, cuts. I heard no attempt whatsoever for cuts in departments where any private company would go in, the mayor should have done this, and say, I need you to do whatever you have to do to lower your department costs by 10%, 15%, 20%. When you see that kind of activity that you, I think it took you two weeks frankly, because I was reading the paper, $20,000 over, that we didn't see was there, didn't take you two months or three months. I don't, 20 million, sorry. I don't understand why the mayor didn't tell departments to find 10% across the board to cut. So I'm saying, things could have. So I'm as, I'm saying, things could have happened that could have helped. Nothing happened. And he could go through as the budget chair and look at the little line items all he wanted to, but the basic stuff did not happen. And you did not address what I said.
The answer would be, should some manager decide they want to cut the Board of Ed by 10%?
Not the Board of Ed, sir.
That's half the city budget and half the taxes.
I'm talking about the city administration.
If an administration wants to cut the police department 10% or the fire department 10% and close fire houses and lay off cops, they can do that. If somebody wants to go through the public works department and say, we don't use many sanitation trucks, they can do that. Or we don't need to turn the lights on in the city building, you know, when, they can do that.
Strange stuff.
I, I, I look at every line in the city as does Mr. Nacro. Anything we think we can cut without paying, we do. We did cut about $4 million from what would have been presented in terms of the 70 physicians the mayor eliminated and in terms of about $2 million of other non-personnel related stuff. Is that enough from, you know, point of view? I don't, that's, but that, but those become policy decisions. I'm, I'm a finance guy. I work for a mayor.
And we need to tighten the belt of the city. You know you're throwing out your pants all night. Your belt's not.
I do have that habit.
Yes, of course. Ladies. Um, number one, what, what I find hilarious is you gave all these people, the console is huge. I did thank for them to read and vote. How many people understand that sort of thing? Really? Point by point by point. You'd have to stand there for three years telling them what each item is about. Yet, they get that paperwork, yada, 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 and then they vote. But when they vote, it affects me. That's number one. Number two, I want to know who, who reassessed my house. That's number two. I got blindsided. I had absolutely no idea my house was that valuable. And, number three, have, have you considered and what's your opinion on, what do you think about a financial control? I want, I want you to tell me, Mr. Plato. Don't, don't go around circles, Mr. Plato.
I, I try not to.
We haven't gone.
So, so number, number one, the city council takes.
Your opinion, forget the city council.
No, no, I'm explaining the process. The city, we do a month of work internally before the mayor presents his budget.
Say that louder.
We do a month of looking at all the stuff and giving the mayor choices before he presents his budget.
We're talking now about that line.
Then the council takes a month reviewing it and the committee, their committee spent, I don't know how many meetings, a lot of time going through it and, you know, Mr. Burns can describe that.
Sure.
As far as, you know, your particular, and, and if anybody does feel there's an error in their home, there's something that's really out of whack, you know, email me, kenneth@flato@bridgeport. And I will check, but.
We were overvalued by 30%. We go over there and we, they, they said, yes, yes, we'll take care of it. They don't and we go to the airport to get lawyers.
Right. Well, we, what we try to do.
30% higher than what two independent presos gave us. And yet, nobody wants to hear it.
That's right.
The assessment company and the assessor have the responsibility to do the evaluations. What I try to do is try to get information, try to figure out if it looks correct. I do my little samples. I, I did go through a lot of it when they were finishing it and it looked relatively representative to me looking at sales and stuff. They're absolutely in a statistical reval, which what, what this one is, it's not a full measure, which happens in 2020 when every home gets checked. Unfortunately, with a statistical reval, which is what happens two, two of the three times, a company comes in, they look at sales, they look at the data for a street and they say, that street, that area is X. That area is X for that type of house, 25 different types of houses.
You know what? I, I have a good example. There is a piece of property for sale on my street. It is 1.02 acres. It is for sale for over 749,000, okay? My half acre of property is evaluated at $2.3 million of acre.
So I looked at.
Now, where, I don't know where any place in Bridgeport, unless it's paved with gold, would be that. And I've gone back and said, you guys have made a mistake. And the, the used car salesman that runs this says, oh, yes, and does nothing. I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous that I have to go out and spend another $20,000 on attorneys again because you guys don't have a memory. And it's not you, Mr. Plato. I'm not picking on you. I'm not picking on these people. It's just that we're all very frustrated. We cannot pay the bill for all of everybody else's mistakes. Black Rock can't do it. I'm sorry.
The last quick question on the control board, I started my career with the New York Control Board, State Control Board overseeing Yonkers. There's no panacea. Control board can put controls on. They can limit things for a while. Unless you want to advocate representative democracy, you can't have a dictatorial control board telling you what to do for 100 years. So sure, for a period of time in a crisis, Bridgeport is not running out of money. Bridgeport is having problems. We are not bankrupt.
Not yet.
No, not yet. I am.
So, so if you wish to give up your rights and have an unelected board come in and tell the city what to do, maybe they'll do some good stuff, maybe they won't. You know, there's no, it, 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 there's no easy fix. If there was. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm a Bridgeport taxpayer too, so I, I pay the bill as well. I was paying my $12,000 last year.
My name's Tim. I'm on the Bridgeport. I just have one question. It's the thing that's been bothering me since this started. You two voted for the budget and then there was a promise of a soft veto. Do you two regret that vote? Yes or no? And then if you.
And I'd say absolutely. Absolutely.
And then where do you two stand on the independent control board? Those are my two questions.
Well, Scott, you can answer your first question.
I said, yes, I do regret it.
I regret it. And, and as the, the handout that Scott sent out, it is, you know, some of you know that per the city charter, if the council rejects the budget that is submitted by the Budget Appropriations Committee, the budget will automatically revert to the $562 million budget that the mayor proposed, originally proposed. The city council, especially Scott and the budget committee, were able to identify 12 million in cuts and get 10 million in cuts to the proposed mayoral budget. Knowing that there was the two, there was about $2.1 million that we had been told would be once the state budget level or funding level was confirmed, that it had not changed, that that money would go towards property tax relief. So we voted yes for the budget. The reason why we voted no to the mill rate was not a cop-out, was not to make ourselves look good in the eyes of our constituents and trying to pull a fast one because our constituents are way too smart, believe me, to pull a fast one over, was because we voted on, we could not vote for a mill rate that was based on a budget that we did not agree with and we were misled on.
Yeah, but you voted for the budget because you were hedging on the state money coming in. I mean, it's a paradox here. You can't have it both ways.
Yeah, there was no veto that was supposed to have occurred.
Don't tell me it should have happened. Put it, you should have never voted for the increase without having the state money. You could have added it later. Okay.
Okay, regardless, so that was the reason. That was the reason. Did you have another question, Tim, follow up or anything?
My second was just, so it's great that, I'm glad that you guys regret the vote. That's good. I'm glad that you acknowledge that. The one other question I have is your independent, your views on independent financial boards. What do you think? Would you guys be willing to sponsor a resolution to do that?
I've spoken with Dave Walker about it. I would need to revisit with him more about what it would look like, whether it's something that would aid the city. I've talked to Ken because as he said, that's where his, his career started with that. You know, in, in terms of a city being bankrupt or facing something like that, it, it would be an absolute necessity. Right now, we are not bankrupt. We do have structural issues and, and, you know, one of the things I, I want to make really clear, you know, this, this didn't happen between January and now. I mean, I think we all know that. It's been happening for decades. So to undo that is going to take some time. So can we do it on our own? Maybe. I, I, you know, we did hire temporarily a, a financial advisor for, for the budget committee. I'd be more than delighted to go back and, and get someone to, to continue with that. But, you know, if, if the house is on fire, sure, bring in the fire department. But I think we need to look at that before we jump in and say, yeah, this is definitely what we need to do.
I actually pulled back to that same matter. I did a little bit of research and on the last time that we had a, there's a case study that was, I found online, the last time Bridgeport had a financial review board.
That was different than a control board, though.
And I agree, and I agree, but the circumstances were a lot more dire than what we're in today to have the review. I, I do agree it's dire, believe me, but the, the city at the time was in a deficit of $60 million over the course of a two or three year period. And it was a financial review board and not a control board. So there's a different, a difference in the, in the authority levels between the two. Exactly. So bringing in the review board, it, it was in effect from, through 1995. I think it started in 98. Thank you, 88, 95. So again, do you have, did you find out, Tim?
Rutgers.
Yeah. So I looked at that and I tried to find more definitive information on the difference between the review board. And I know, I understand Kathleen, that the, the overall difference is there's a lot more control when it's a control board versus a review board. I tried to find some definitive language about what a financial control board within the state of Connecticut, which would have to be mandated by the governor, requested by the mayor of the administration. And I, I, yeah, well, I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there, I didn't find anything. In terms of, so as Scott said, you know, there's more information to be gathered, but looking at this, this was just a review board and the city was in a much more dire situation financially than as we are today at this moment, tonight. So.